At this time, I'll be calling our regular meeting to order. We appreciate everyone's here this evening. We're especially excited to see our ball team back with us again and look forward to recognizing them. At this time, we have with us, uh, Deacon Patrick Snyder to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Let us begin as we do all good things, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, all legitimate authority comes from you, and you have taught us that civil authority is necessary for the order of society. You've also taught us that all civil, outlaw and civil authority is subordinate and subject to your law. As a nation, we beg your mercy, for we are in trouble. We live in a culture of death and fear, with our freedoms that are your gift to us, including our ability to gather and worship you being eroded every day. We beg you to bless this board, to bless them with the gifts of the Holy Spirit as they go about their work: wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, piety, and fear of the Lord as they strive to support the residents of Hope Mills. Remind them daily of their responsibility, first to you and then to the people, the wonderful community that they serve. For we are all but servants, and the way we serve you is by serving our neighbor. We ask all this through your son, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
God bless you, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, we do have, uh, two additions to our agenda, and one would be that we're gonna add a presentation to recognize the Hope Mills 2022 Ozone Baseball Team for their runner-up finish in the 2022 Dixie Youth Baseball World Series, and I'd like to put that under "Presentation" and put that as A, and then make the following ones after that as B and C. Also, we need to add under Consent Agenda, Item G, which would be consideration of approval of the draft minutes from the May 17th, 2022 Special Board of Commissioners Meeting. Do we have any other additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We'd like to move Item E on the Consent Agenda to "New Business," and that would be Item A.
Say, Item E.
Correct. Item, Item E, we're moving Item E from the Consent Agenda to Item A under "New Business." And with those changes, are there any other changes, or additions, or deletions? If not, do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. I'm also gonna, if it's okay, official comments, can we save those throughout the presentation, and that way you can make within that comment, I'm sure you'll want to congratulate our young ball team over here. At this time, we have special recognition for the, our ozone baseball team. They were just here, and we made a presentation for their, their winning and representing North Carolina. They went, they did a great job. They actually beat an undefeated team, uh, and I'm sorry to say that we didn't get them twice, but I am so thankful that what happened was that you were able to, uh, bring back the runner-up trophy because of all the, they were giving me the numbers and the times that you've had played and played hard. So I want to congratulate the coaches and the team. We do have a special presentation, and who has those?
On the boxes on the side.
Okay. Commissioner Legg, would you like to assist, that you're with our youth association? What, uh, and Maxie Dove was supposed to be here this evening. Maxie Dove actually made sure that we had our plaques and things for this evening, and I just want to thank him and our Parks and Recreation Department for everything they did. Thank the parents. Also, the number of people and fans, I watched it on, on the videos that were on Facebook and social media, it's just unbelievable, the crowds that you brought. So, at this time, if all of the team would come up here, I'm not going to be doing individual names this time, but plaques are all the same. I will read one of them so that you can know, and I'll get, in fact, I tell you what this is. Commissioners, come on down, you can help.
Oh, what?
Come on down, we'll let them all, Commissioner Legg, we'll let them all. That way, we can take care of this team all at one time. It says, "Congratulations to the 1,200 Ozone All-Star Team, All-Star Team, for their impressive runner-up finish in the 2022 Dixie Youth Baseball World Series." And each one of our young men and our coaches will receive one of these special plaques of the town of Hope Mills, and I can't tell you how excited we are that these young men are our future, and we know that things, great things are gonna come from them because the determination that they had out on that ball field, it was amazing. And the heat, and all the other things that you had to deal with, just congratulations. And if you will, we'll let you pass these out.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Coach, what's your thing?
Yes.
Congratulations.
There you go.
Congratulations. You got a banner, too?
Congratulations, guys.
What, we can do with the congratulations, sir?
Alright, now Commissioners, they were asking that we all stand back there, and we're gonna have Tom come to the team and behind the team, and they're gonna make a picture. So we're gonna get, all Hope Mills together, so Commissioners, get behind the stage. We did, I want to know who hit the home run in the final game. Alrighty, congratulations.
See, there, y'all should've got the memo.
That's right, where do you get the memo? So you want us to scoot to the middle? We can sprunt you up here, I'll move my chair.
I had the memo, I'll step right there.
Alright, so here we go.
There we go.
If we get close together, they can get all this, I have to put.
Let me get my screen.
Sure, come on up here.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah, that's me. Really, I'm really, I'm really really. I'm the tour in this world. Two people, man, you see.
Bring it, share it, I'll bring it down.
Put it down there.
Okay, hold on.
I just like to say, thank y'all.
You appreciate the recognition, huh?
Where do you put your flags, Jack?
We'll take those over to the, uh, you want the flag or not?
Thank you.
What you do, what you do?
He's taking our tape today.
It's not in the budget.
Y'all want us to hold the plaques up?
Yeah, I would.
Hold your, hold your, out the bags. They don't want to see a picture of a crown.
Yeah, that thing does, that thing does brown oil.
That's what I'm saying, that's it. I think it's the wrong crown.
You set your bags up here, after we, you know, yeah, set them up here.
We don't want the bags.
Yeah.
Tighten it up, guys, tighten it up.
Get that shop room tight.
Everybody calm, y'all good? This is about as good as it's gonna be. Trophy's good? Oh, switch with, switch with Z.
Yeah, I think when you put it back in the front, it gets lost a little bit up there.
That'll work.
I'll hold up here for you.
Fix your hair. This is about switchy. Alright, everybody smile.
Y'all the winners.
We did meet up there once, though. That was the flag, look.
Alright.
Everybody, hey, everybody forgot to hold it up. They were still.
Everybody look at Anna.
One more. That's it, alright.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
We appreciate y'all representing.
That's right.
That's good.
Right here, Scott, right here.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, Scott, Scott.
Scott. Hey, next, look, next time I send y'all the memo, make sure y'all pay attention.
That's how they get it in the military.
Congratulations.
I just wonder how y'all managed to.
You guys are watching Jerry's Kids. The Jerry's Kids?
Well, I, you know, too willing and effortful.
Alright, now it's time.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I know you guys know how proud I am.
What?
Yeah.
Of this kid.
No.
I'm proud of them, too.
Yeah, we proud of them.
I would like to thank some of our town staff for coming down this week and supporting this team. It means a lot to them, it means a lot to me.
Mr. Baseball.
Mr. Baseball.
Alright, that's, I'm starting our official comments, so, is, you have anything more, Commissioner Legg?
I'm afraid to get into it.
Alright. Commissioner Mitchell?
Oh, thank everybody for coming up.
Alright, Commissioner Marley?
I don't have anything other than, you know, just congratulating the ball team. I, I saw both games on Thursday, and they played hard. It was a hot week out there, but, um, they represented very well.
Yes. Commissioner Scroll?
Um, nothing to include, Madam Mayor, no, no.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Nothing.
Well, I was, uh, wanting to share with you that we have Team Hope Mills, and that Team Hope Mills is going to be packing meals at, with the United Way at Snyder Baptist Church on August 25th, and the goal was to get, the first goal was to get 15 members from all over our departments, or whoever would be willing to go. We've now, uh, as of today, we have 29, so we exceeded our goal, and if PWC doesn't, and isn't aware that we have 29, they were the top ones right now, they had 25 volunteers. So what we're hoping is that we're gonna outshine PWC, who is the largest donor in Cumberland County. They win state awards every year. We can't compete with the money, but we can compete with the people willing to volunteer. But I just want to congratulate Team Hope Mills and just know how excited I am that we'll be able to help pack 30,000 meals. And that's unbelievable to me that we can do that, but last year they did, uh, almost 26,000, so, and it's all done between 11 and 1, uh, on the 25th. So that's my official comments, I'm excited about our Hope Mills team. Alright, next we have, um, presentations, and the next presentation with Public Safety Building Project Update, and it's gonna be presented by our architect, Scott Garner. We'll welcome you to the podium.
Oh, good, one page.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm glad to be with you tonight, and, uh, I think the ball team's great, that's a hard act to follow. We are making good progress on the building, things are going along very well. The sewer line, aspils, will be turned in tomorrow, which means that we can make the connection to the, uh, to the PWC, which will be about a month before that happens. Um, the water line is under LA Priest and Public Safety Way. It has not been connected at Golf View yet, but it will be. The building sign for John W. Hodges is under construction, and we're putting up the flag poles. The rear concrete driveway was put in last week, so, uh, that's, that's good progress. On the interior, uh, heating and air conditioning is being finished, we're putting in thermostats, plumbing fixtures are being set, uh, light fixtures are in, electricity's on, air conditioning is on, so it's a better working environment than it's been for a long time. And then we're starting to put in the finished materials of carpet, athletic flooring, porcelain tile, and, uh, the LVT, which is luxury vinyl tile. We have not started on the epoxy floors yet. The doors are hung, hardware is being put on, painting is in progress, the elevator has been installed, so, uh, we're getting close, we're on the short roads, as they say. Um, the builder, the builder projects that the building will be turned over mid-September. I think that's a bit optimistic, I think it'll be a little bit longer than that, but that is our target. Uh, we do not have any change orders this month. We had hoped to bring you the change order for the parking lot to the rear of the town hall in Parks and Rec. Um, we got the price, and we have asked for more proposals on that. We think that we maybe could, can get a better deal on that, so we're taking a hard look at that, we will bring it back to you as soon as we get it. Uh, there was one electrical change, which also we thought we should be better, and we have kicked that back, and we expect to bring that to you. There will be a few, um, coordination things as we get into the final, you know, closeout of the building. I don't expect there'll be too many, but, and I don't expect they'll be extremely large, but there will be some, there always are. Do we have any questions or comments, or, we are in schedule, uh, we're in budget, we're on schedule, and, uh, we're moving right along. So, as soon as they turn the building over, then we can demolish the existing fire station. The fire chief wants to use that for training purposes. We can then build a sewer line to connect to the library, and then we'll have to build a driveway going out to Golf View for the fire department and the rear parking lot for the firefighters. So, there's still a good bit of work to be done. We are, we're not through yet, but, uh, but we're making good progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or any comments? Okay, thank you. Uh, the next I have is a proclamation, an observance of the 21st anniversary of the September 11th, 2001 attacks on America. We hereby adopt the following proclamation in tribute to those lost and injured on 9/11, and the many who gave of themselves in service to their communities and to this country in the aftermath of the attacks. Whereas people of all ages and walks of life across America and around the world collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy on September 11th, 2001, whereas September 11th, 2001 will never and should never be just another day in the hearts and minds of all Americans. Whereas the Patriot Day proclamation officially and permanently designated September 11th as a national day of service and remembrance, the flying of the flag United States half-staff, as well as community service and charitable activities in tribute and remembrance. Now therefore, our Jackie Warner Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills do hereby proclaim September 11th as a voluntary day of service and remembrance, and furthermore call upon all citizens and organizations to consider joining in this observance and to engage in activities of tribute, solemn remembrance, and charitable service. Next, we have public hearings, and the first is Case ZNG-011-22, rezoning of 1.19 plus or minus acres from C1P Planned Local Business to R5 Single Family or to a more restrictive, restrictive zoning district. It's located at 4092 Professional Drive, uh, and it's submitted by Longleaf Properties on behalf of Cumberland County Hospital System Incorporated. I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Alright, I'll try to make this, uh, pretty quick. As stated, this is ZNG-011-22, it's a rezoning request from the C1P District to the R5 Single Family Residential District. The site is a 1.19 acre vacant tract, uh, located at 4092 Professional Drive. Um, it was a former location of a building, um, medical clinic that was flooded out because of the hurricane, and, uh, it still sits vacant now. Um, the area to the immediate east is zoned under the R5 District and developed with an apartment complex. Area to the immediate west is vacant and zoned under the ONIP District. The applicant is requesting this zoning for the construction of a single-family residence. The Southwest Plan calls for mixed-use and open space, so this request is not in compliance with it, although it does have staff support. This is the location of Jihaydric and Hydric Inclusion soils and public water and sewer from PWC. As you can see, a significant portion of the site, um, does have wetlands and things of that nature. Um, this is a future land use that does show the project, the property split between open space and mixed-use land use designation. And these are your site photographs. This is looking, um, south, if I'm, basically if the site is behind me, looking towards camera. This is a view, um, standing across the street from the subject property, looking at the apartment complex to the, uh, east. This is a view looking down Professional Drive, the subject property is to your left. This is a direct view of the subject property. This is a view, uh, looking north along Professional Drive, the subject property is to your right. And this is your recommendation, the Commonwealth County Joint Planning Board recommended approval at the July 19th, um, Planning Board meeting, and staff is also in support of this request. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Anybody, anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir?
If that flooded out, why are you proposing a residential house be built there?
Um, you can actually build in an area that has flooded out, you just need to follow guidelines that are enforced by the state. And so when the person, uh, approached us, he came to plan review first, and he has met with Beth Brown, um, and so she's making sure that any development of this site does meet those guidelines. Uh, but there are areas like raising the furnace floor elevation and things of that nature that would make you eligible for the development and successful development of a site that actually had some of these issues. But we, he's actually, uh, he, he went down that avenue before, um, filling out the application for the rezoning, so he is aware of those issues and will, I have a confidence that he'll, uh, take the steps to comply.
So if he builds the, the site of the property up, where the house will be, does that make it easier?
Yes, ultimately. Um, I won't get into the, the intricate details of the stormwater ordinance, but that is one of the, there, they do have mechanisms in place, uh, that if you were to do, uh, certain things, that it would make the site feasible for development.
That's all for me, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, you want to open a public hearing?
Yeah.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Okay, at this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this project?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing. Any other questions or concerns? Do we have a motion?
Alright, go ahead. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
In the case of ZNG-01-22, the Town of Hope Mills planning staff recommend approval of the zoning from C1P Planned Local Businesses to R5 Residential District in compliance. The approval in this amendment to be adopted Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013, mapped for the R5 area, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional requests or application for amendment to said map for this request. The following change and conditions was considered in amending the zoning ordinance, zoning map, to meet development needs of the community, as the mixed-use land use designation does contemplate and facilitation, the facilitation of residential development, a single-family residential use incompatible with the multifamily residential development on the existing adjacent R5 zone parcel. Approval of the request is reasonable and in public interest, as the proposed use would be in harmony with the overall surrounding areas and will be in line with the existing surrounding zone, and because the site has access to public utilities.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, and the other discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Next, we have public comments, and we do have, um, I don't know if I, Tom Anas, Anastas, Anas, you'll have to say your name for me, sir.
Hi, I'm Tom Anastacy.
Anastasia.
Yes.
Alrighty.
Good evening. I know you have a case in front of you this evening on the Consent Agenda with Sheets, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I am a Sheets employee, I work for the company. Um, and I just wanted, since this will be the first one in Hope Mills, uh, just letting you know that we are a family-owned company, and we are proudly celebrating 70 years in business this year in 2022. It was started by five brothers in Altoona, Pennsylvania, um, and they've grown the business right now to over 600 stores in a six-state footprint, with about 100 of those stores right here in North Carolina. So I know you've seen some stores recently opening in the area, um, but we're just excited just to be here, uh, in front of you this evening, uh, and I just welcome any questions that you may have about the company or, or about Sheets, or myself.
We're excited for you to be here also. We are, we're very familiar, especially those of us that have gone, uh, either to Greensboro up in the, the south, too. Uh, the food's great, good service, uh, proud, proud to have you at Hope Mills. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, ma'am?
I've had a lot of feedback, um, because I'm, I'm very active with the car community in the town, and, uh, people were excited when the two in Fayetteville opened up, so now that there's one in Hope Mills, they're very, very excited, so, uh, can't wait for it to happen.
We're, we're, we're ready for it to happen, too, and, you know, the, the family, uh, I keep telling them, I said, "We can't build them fast enough." They want to keep growing, they're, they're being, um, very proactive right now in their growth, and smart with their growth, and, uh, I'm just proud to work for them, and we're excited to bring one here to the community and be a business partner in the community.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anything we can do, feel free to give us a call.
Absolutely.
And our town manager is available also. Thank you.
And thank you to staff also, helping us along this far. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, on our consent agenda, we have moved Item E to, uh, New Business, and that item is consider, the consideration to accept state funding for stormwater projects and approve Resolution R 2022-22 and Budget Amendment Number Five. We originally asked for 300,000, and now they're receiving 600,000 ARPA funds through the state of North Carolina. That is being moved to New Business. With that being said, uh, do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve, I have a second. Any comments, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Alright, there is, um, we have no old business, and now the new business would be Item E from our consent agenda, and since Mayor Pro Tim asked for that, no?
Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to Commissioners.
Commissioner Scroll, okay?
Um, I just have a question for that. Now, since we're receiving the $600,000, um, does it have to go to stormwater, all that, the additional $300,000?
Yes.
Yes, it's designated for stormwater.
Okay, yeah, because that's why I just want to make sure.
Okay.
If we could have put some, you know, parcels.
Yeah, it'd be nice, but we still have plenty of stormwater projects, that's still just a drop in the bucket, but as you know, we have a lot of other projects as well. So it was surprising to see that we had originally asked for the 300.
Yeah.
And we started getting the information back, and it kept saying 600. I thought, like, okay, that's not, that's not right, it's 300.
Did we have a typo? Did we have a typo somewhere?
Well, I thought it might be. So, then when we had to send in the paperwork, it came back, approved 600. So I went. So I went to Beth and I said, apparently it's six instead of three. So, um, we filled out the paperwork, sent it in, it's approved, the resolution tonight, uh, that y'all will approve with this. Uh, we'll confirm it and then the budget amendment's with it also and then, um, we'll get going on some stormwater projects.
Too easy.
Alright.
So, saying that, do we have a motion to approve, uh, item E on our consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Any questions in rel- in, uh, for our manager, for our manager's report?
You know, I don't have a wish then.
Uh, we'd have to come in for that special meeting, so we'd have to make it, uh, we could, but we can, we'll arrange that, we can do that. We just have to figure out a, a time that we can get everybody in.
They do it by Zoom. We'll Zoom that meeting.
Well, and is, is, is that, I don't believe we can do anymore Zoom, I think the Zoom, well, I know, but I was gonna suggest, but I know that Zoom has been eliminated as a possibility now that it, the COVID restrictions have been removed and even working from home in some places has been removed too, so. So, okay, well, if, if needed, we can call and I think for special meetings, what, forty-eight hour notice? So, so we just need to get, and that would give them time to probably arrange their schedules too.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Then, can this meeting be recessed? And brought back up?
This meeting that we're in right now?
Yeah, for what we're talking about doing.
Um, because this is a regularly scheduled meeting and this is a thing that particular items, um,
Okay. Just trying to save time.
Okay, alright.
I just have a question, um, for the manager's report.
Okay.
Um, I have a question for, uh, the police chief actually, um. Is, I don't know if this was, uh, was there an incident that happened last night? Like, was there a stabbing or something that took place?
Not that, not that, no.
Okay. Okay.
Right, there was a, there was a, a guy got shot last week, um, but no, there's nothing last night.
Alright, too easy.
No, I normally, if it's something major, I normally.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I figured I'd ask and, too easy.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, I do want to commend Chief because, uh, again, we get favorable comments on the fact that we're posting the results of the arrest and that the things are happening around with our police department and I think that security is, uh, making people feel even more safe now because they know that, that things are happening to correct those issues that might be out there. Anything else, anyone else have anything?
Uh, just take time to thank the town manager for sending up that updated information, I think you sent it out Friday. Appreciate that.
Anyone else have a question?
I would like to thank those who attended the, the World Series Tournament in Lumberton. Town staff and Commissioners, Mr. Marley, appreciated having you guys there. I tried to keep a profile down there and hide, but everybody found me anyway. But thank everybody who attended. I wanna do it again.
Yes. Anyone? Alright, uh, just a reminder, on the twenty-fifth, we may, um, use the town van to take some instead of taking all these cars over there to Snyder, if you can't stay from eleven to one, if you can break the time up, eleven to twelve or twelve to one. Uh, the main thing is there, and, and if they by some chance have enough volunteers to complete the process, we'll be through sooner than. And they do provide lunch.
Wear a gray shirt.
Yeah. Yeah, but we can wear gray shirts though, right? For that twenty-fifth. Wear shirts.
I think you're gonna have a, I think you're gonna have a t-shirt with, special t-shirt. And, and while, and I guess I need to bring that up just for a point of reference too. Um, I was asked and, and I, and I just, I wanted to clarify this and maybe let the board make the decision. Our Chamber of Commerce this past term had a member that served on the board that was actually on the board before she was hired by the town. So when she, um, gave up her position and left the town employment, she also stepped down from that board. The question was, do we want to put a liaison there? And my thoughts on that is we've never done that because we've tried to have it so that our participation is by membership and then what we try to do is encourage that at least one town member is there and it's, as far as serving on a board, then that means that you're, you need to be a very, uh, visible part of that board as you saw uh, with our town employee that was there, she went to a lot of things as part of the board membership too, so. My thought would be, we have, uh, Mr. McLaughlin, um, Miss, Mr. Holland, myself, um, Mr. Mazeros. A lot of times, you know, some of the other board members will be at those meetings. I think if we just leave it at that, that we make a point of, for the regular meetings, that we have a, a member of the town staff or, or board there and not put us as a liaison because it's really not like an official town committee. Now, that's my thought, so I was gonna ask for board input on that because, um, we really, this is something, um, that was just unusual this time by the way the situation was. So, questions?
Yeah, I thought at one time that, uh, Commissioner Ellis used to be the liaison, she gave it briefly.
She was, um, she was just, she worked with the Chamber of Commerce Jan.
Okay.
It was one of those cases where that, the friendship was part of that too. We've never really, we had, at one time, we tried to do a liaison to Trade Street, the Trade Street merchant, merchants and we tried to work with them and then decided that that was probably best left to the, the merchants themselves instead of the board cause they would have to bring stuff back to the board for, for influence. So is it okay if we just leave it at that and we do, we are active members and we do, um, we do attend. Uh, and I guess what we could do is do a real good job of making sure there's always somebody there, um, at the meetings. Okay, anything else for the good of the team? If not, do.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, motion, sir? Well, could we, could we set that public hearing on that, the next, uh, meeting? Because if we, that, cause that would give us plenty of time to read them, I did get them, I, I opened them up, but I didn't, I didn't do a lot with them, but, so could we put that public hearing on the, um, nineteenth? Would that be soon enough? And if they have questions about any ordinances, can they just send you an email and reference to that? So as you go through them, especially since we've got time, there'll be, there's a month before our next board meeting, okay? Anything else?
Madam Mayor, I would like to say, oh, go ahead.
Any staff comments? Nope, we're good, alright, any, alright, Commissioner Legg?
I would like to, again, I know I just keep beating a dead horse. This baseball team, there was, so that we will realize how sufficient this is. There was a hundred and ninety-seven baseball teams in that classification throughout the nation. Number two's not bad.
Not bad at all.
Not bad at all, so, I'm really proud of those, those kids and being the president from across the street, that makes me even a prouder person. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anything else, alright, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.